We're going to be hearing from Texas Congressman Ron Paul, who's taking the stage.
Good afternoon.
And he's joined by his son, Kentucky Senator Rand Paul, at this town hall meeting.
I thought after two days of debate you'd be tired of politics. But we're just getting started. We're looking forward to Tuesday for sure. But before we get started, I wanted to introduce several members of my family. This is my wife Carol. You might have received some greetings from her. She sent out a lot of cookbooks here lately. But also, our daughter-in-law Peggy is here, and her daughter Linda. And we also had the arrival of a son, who celebrated his birthday yesterday, Senator Rand Paul.
So I'm State Senator Jim Forsythe. I'm from the Lakes Region, right below you guys, right down Laconia, Alton, Guilford. It's an honor to be hosting on my Dr. Paul's campaign chairman in New Hampshire. We also have Senators Sanborn on board and Senator White. So we're glad to have support of so many senators. I really got the honor of working with Rand Paul back in 2007, when he was campaigning for his dad. And I got to really know him well because we were driving around, and he is a true believer. He is someone who, at that time, did not want to run. He didn't want to run for office. He had a successful practice. He was a family man, but I think he saw the call to duty, and he ran. And we're so happy that he did, because he's done a fantastic job. And Senator Rand Paul will introduce his father.
Thank you, thank you. What a crowd, what a crowd. Anybody here for Ron Paul already? All right. All right. All of you here for Ron Paul, just be quiet, and I'll try to get to the undecideds then. No, no, we'll take whatever cheers and approval we can get. Many years ago, Reagan was getting ready to go to a summit with Gorbachev, and he told his staff he was going to tell this story, and his staff said, "Oh, no, if you do it, there'll be an international incident." And Reagan did anyway, went ahead and told this story. And it seems that there was an accountant in Moscow, and this accountant had wanted to buy a car, so he saved up his money for years and years, because nobody had much money in the Soviet Union. There was only one car dealer. It was the state. It was a crummy piece of crap car, but it was a car on the left. So he saved for years and years, and he went into the state dealership, and he put his money down, and the surly bureaucrat said, "Well, that's all good and well. Come back in 10 years, and you can pick up your car." And the accountant didn't miss a beat. He said, "Well, will that be on a Tuesday or a Wednesday?" And the surly bureaucrat looked at him and said, "I told you it'll be 10 years. You want to know if it'll be a Tuesday or Wednesday?" He said, "Yeah, the plumber's coming on Wednesday, and I don't want to miss it." Now, when I first started telling that story, I thought, "Well, people in America won't get it, because how could we ever conceive of the government owning our car dealerships and our car manufacturers?" But you know, the new acronym or the new abbreviation for GM, right? Government Motors. We've come a long way, but we've been going a long way really in the wrong direction. We've been going towards the government owning businesses, owning banks, bailing out people who made bad decisions. Anybody here think that a banker who makes $100 million a year on Wall Street, or $10 million a year on Wall Street, if he makes a bad decision and he's going bankrupt, that we should bail him out so he gets a $10 million bonus the next year? Anybody believe that? I got started running as part of the Tea Party movement in 2010, because I was unhappy with Republicans. I was unhappy with Republicans who doubled the debt under George Bush, who doubled the size of the Department of Education, and then had the audacity to vote for this bank bailout. So that's why I got involved. People say, "You can't run and say Republicans are doing a bad job and get elected as a Republican." But I guess you can, because it makes a difference what kind of Republican we get. I tell people, "The Republican Party is an empty vessel unless we imbue it with values." Now, you've got a lot of candidates running around New Hampshire saying they're Reagan conservatives. But Reagan would be rolling over in his grave to hear people say they're Reagan conservatives when they voted to double the size of the Department of Education, which half of them on the stage did, when they supported an individual mandate, the lynchpin of Obamacare, when they supported foreign aid around the world. All of these things are inconsistent with the conservative wing of our party. There's only been one candidate who, through the years, has voted against the spending bills, against the appropriation bills, who has voted for a balanced budget, for a balanced budget amendment, who has opposed and never voted for any budget that wasn't balanced. Now, some of them will say, "Oh, I've never voted for Planned Parenthood." Everyone on the stage voted for all those budgets that always had money for Planned Parenthood. Now, they put in a line saying, "Oh, the money won't go for abortion." They all voted for the budget anyway, because they were a rubber stamp. They never had the courage to say no. But there has been somebody in Washington who's had the courage to vote no, who's been one of the few candidates who's voted no, sometimes even by himself. There's only been one candidate in Washington who's never been accused of flip-flopping. There's only been one candidate in Washington who the lobbyists don't even bother to come to his office. And there's only one candidate, and this is the anomaly that bugs the heck out of people, and they can't understand it. They can't understand this narrative, because they want to paint Ron Paul as someone who doesn't believe in a strong national defense, and it's absolutely untrue. You know who the soldiers trust with their money and their contributions more than any other candidate? Answer! There's only one candidate in the race who's gotten more contributions from active-duty soldiers than all of the other candidates combined. And I think a soldier, a young man or woman who puts their life on the line, who sends a contribution, and a lot of them have been sending them to Ron Paul, shows that there are many soldiers who are thoughtful about going to war. That war isn't always the answer. They will fight for their country. They've volunteered to go and fight for their country, but they're thoughtful about it. They're very thoughtful about it, and they know that they're putting their life on the line, and they want to have a commander in chief who will have the same thoughtfulness. And I give you that new, and hopefully commander in chief, my father Ron Paul. Thank you. Thank you very much. Pretty soon, he's going to be able to get up on a stage and give a pretty good speech, don't you think? Well, we're going to have a little different format. I'm not going to start off with a long speech, but the format will be that Jim will ask me a few questions, and then we'll get some questions from the audience.
Thank you, Dr. Paul. So you served in Congress for 12 terms, which is quite a long time, but you were practicing medicine, you know, before that, and you've continued to practice medicine since that. What was practicing medicine like in those days? And how have you seen it change? And how's that influenced how you feel about government approach to medicine?
That's one thing that I have witnessed, the change in the medical practice. I went to school, college in the 50s, and started medical school in '57, graduated end of 1960. But finished a couple of years of residency, and then did some practice before government was very much involved in medicine. That was before Medicaid, before Medicare, and there was just minimal government. The government, you know, took care of veterans and some others. But then in the 60s, LBJ, I don't know if you remember him or not, but he claimed that we could have guns and butter. Of course, they were fighting the Vietnam War. But at the same time, the butter was that he had to make sure that everybody was taken care of, so he introduced this idea that the federal government had to take over medical care. And subsequently, over these last decades, he has done that. But we have seen a dramatic change. The most important negative is that the cost of medicine has skyrocketed. The second negative, it has destroyed virtually the doctor-patient relationship. And third, it's introduced not socialized medicine, but corporate medicine. We don't have government really running things and owning it. That would be very, very bad. But corporate medicine isn't a whole lot better. So we have corporations. Drug companies become powerful lobbyists. The insurance companies, there's powerful lobbyists. And the medical profession, powerful lobbyists, and the management company. So it's a dramatic change. But the little bit of experience I had in the early 60s was in a Catholic hospital. And all I remember is I didn't get paid very much, because I was, you know, I was coming to an emergency room and wanted to make a couple of dollars. I was moonlighting while I was in the military. And, but the one thing I noticed is, everybody got taken care of, and people who could pay, they paid. Nobody was turned away. But people, you know, received medical care. It wasn't like a period of time, whether it was in the 50s and early 60s, that I recall that people were lying out in the streets and not getting medical care. It was just delivered differently now. But now, we have introduced a changed medical system where, you know, the quality goes down, the cost goes up, and everybody is unhappy. The patients grow unhappy in there, and it's going to get so much worse with Obamacare. So I think a good way to start, once we sort of take over things in Washington, will be to get rid of Obamacare and make sure the control of medicine is returned to you, the citizen, the patient. Maybe we can stay out of mind. Good suggestion.
Okay. So your budget plans to cut a trillion dollars in the first year and balance the budget in three. It stands in stark contrast with a lot of the other candidates. Why do you feel that cutting spending is important? A lot of people say that we need to spend more in order to stimulate the economy.
Well, actually, the country doesn't spend less. The government spends less. When you cut the federal budget, the people get to spend more. And when the people spend the money, they spend it with a much better, much more wisdom than when the government spends it. The government, actually, we lose twice. If they take a trillion dollars out of our pockets, you lose a trillion dollars. If the government spends a trillion dollars, they usually spend it getting itself into trouble, whether it's overseas spending, that's a waste, or if they spend it on bureaucrats, that's a waste. That's putting more pressure on us, and then we have to have additional expenses for overcoming the bureaucracy. So I think we really lose twice that way. But we need to cut a trillion dollars if we're serious. The proposed cuts so far aren't really cuts. They're cuts on proposed increases. They have what they call baseline budgeting. The budget goes up automatically at a certain rate. And if you cut a trillion dollars over 10 years, that's $100 billion per year, that they're going to cut on the proposed increases. But today, let's just compare. $100 billion a year cut on the proposed increases versus what's happening today, the budget's going up $100 billion of real cost every month. So that is a fantasy. It has nothing to do with cuts. And nobody's talking about it. Right now, they're nearly hysterical about some of these mandated cuts because of the supercommittee. They're talking about cuts, and Obama mentioned they were going to cut something out of the military. There are no cuts proposed, whether they're Democrats or Republicans. They're only cuts on these wild proposed increases. They're not willing to admit that this country can't continue to run up a deficit of $1.5 trillion a year. It's growing exponentially, and if we're serious, we have to get the federal government out of our wallets and out of our lives, and we have to let the people spend the money. Then we have a much better chance of regaining prosperity.
Now, Dr. Paul, you know, I served in the Air Force, and I flew KC-135s for Bosnia and during the no-fly zone for Iraq between the Gulf Wars. So I'm somebody who saw firsthand that there's a big difference between defense and overseas military spending. A lot of the things we were involved in weren't defending our country. Can you talk about, I think it's $500 billion of your trillion gets cut? Is that military spending, defense spending? And what would defense look like under a Paul presidency?
I think this is a very important point, because as soon as you talk about cutting funds overseas, and that it's cutting it from, say, the DOD, oh, the defense spending, you want to slash defense spending. But really not. There's a big difference between military spending, overseas spending, foreign aid spending, department, state of department spending, and all the activities, whether CIA activities, now the CIA. You can't distinguish the CIA from the military anymore. The CIA controls drone bombings, any place in the world, Langley, from Washington DC. I mean, it's absolutely out of control. But the military spending is what you want to cut. And you actually can have a better defense from this, because we're just looking for trouble when we have this military spending occupying countries, telling other people what to do, and how they have to run their country, and threatening everybody, and no spot, they admit it, there's no spot on the earth that is safe, because we can hit any single spot and any particular individual. So there's a big difference between the two. So when they say that, "Oh, he wants to slash the defense spending," it's not true. I want to slash the military-industrial complex, because they're making too much profits doing the wrong thing.
And then, just recently, the jobs numbers came out, and there was some good news for the jobs numbers. Are we out of the woods as the economy started to recover, and we're all in good shape?
Well, I wish we were, but no, I don't think we are. I think we're in the midst of a financial crisis and a correction that is the biggest in anybody's lifetime in this room. And unless somebody lived through the total depression through the '30s, that was pretty bad. But we're on the verge of this being much worse. Because the financial bubble is understandable if you understand monetary policy in the Federal Reserve. The bubbles come, the depression recessions come inevitably. And this bubble, the major bubble, has been forming since August 15, 1971, when we severed the last link to gold, which meant that governments could spend endlessly, borrow and print money. And the size of government just grew exponentially at the same time the deficit did, because we could rely on the printing of the money, and the world would be willing to take the dollar. So we have inflated. We had our best export, which are dollars. So we buy goods from overseas at a cheap rate. Now we're indebted to the world. We owe $3 trillion to overseas. At the same time, jobs are really gone. The 200,000 jobs is nothing compared to what's really going on. This notion that 8.5% of the people are unemployed is fictitious. Because even if you look at the Bureau of Labor Statistics, they will admit that if you count the people that are partially employed, it's like 17, 18%. And if you conclude everybody, the people who have dropped out of the workforce, or the people who are working two days part-time, unemployment's over 20%. And that's why the people feel a lot worse than the government wants us to feel by propping up these statistics. They also tell us, you know, that there's no inflation. Prices are going up at 2%. All you have to do is be on a fixed income or receive in Social Security. Your standard of living is going down, because the dollar is shrinking in value. So there's nothing, I mean, everybody's glad to see some activity, but this is very temporary. This problem is worldwide, even like the problem with China that we have right now. We exported a lot of dollars to China. We got a lot of goods in, but China inflated their currency too, so they have a bubble. So when this comes down, Europe is collapsing right now. And yet, all Bernanke can do, and all our Secretary of the Treasury can do, Geithner, all they can do is go, "We'll bail you out. We'll take care of it. The American people won't figure it out until it's over, but we can bail you out with just printing dollars, and we're going to buy up the bad debt." They did that, you know, after the collapse in 2008. Yes, there were a lot of problems, but the people who had ripped us off and made all that money, they should have gone bankrupt, and not you getting stuck with the bill. So we're prepared right now, unfortunately, to bail all of Europe, because our banks are connected to the European banks. The European banks bought all the debt of these countries like Greece and Italy and Spain, and that debt isn't worth anything, just like we bought up the worthless debt in this country, the mortgage debt. They said it was illiquid. Nobody would buy it. Well, it was illiquid because it wasn't worth anything, but the Fed bought it, and the Treasury bought it. And that is major. So I wish that we had turned around, but you cannot turn an economy around until you eradicate this debt overhang. Because right now, we're like an individual who has borrowed too much money, they still have a job, but all their income is being used to pay the interest on the debt, and they can't get ahead. And they keep borrowing for time. They kept getting more credit cards and credit cards. So we're at that stage now, where the debt is automatically going up, and the spending is automatically going up, and they're not proposing cuts. Eventually, what has to happen is that we have to wipe that debt off the books, so we can get back to work again. And right now, they're doing everything in the world. They're in total denial in Washington that what we have to do, because it's uncomfortable, or they don't understand it, but they don't want to cut anything. So this is why I think we're in very serious trouble. But there are answers. Sound economic policy and free markets and, you know, property rights, and the things that made America great and wealthy. That's what we need, but we cannot do it by just papering it over and printing money.
Thank you. So we're going to open it up now to questions from the audience. What I would really, really appreciate, we're two days away from the primary. Dr. Paul is surging above 20% now. So it's absolutely critical that we get every vote possible. So I ask you, if you're a Ron Paul supporter, if you're from out of town, please leave it to the undecided voters who are from New Hampshire to ask questions, please. Okay. And there should be some people going around in the audience with microphones to ask questions.
One of the most devastating diagnoses of a family or a senior you can get is that of Alzheimer's and dementia. What would you do to help stop this terrible disease, which is affecting more and more and costing our country billions in productivity every year?
Well, I think what we have to do for all devastating diseases, if you know somebody that's suffering from Alzheimer's, it's devastating. But all diseases are devastating. What you want is a system that is the most efficient way of taking care of problems like that, which means that you have to really challenge, depending on the government, to do it. Because the government gets involved, and if you take the research and development of government, most of those funds are divvied up for political reasons. Drug companies are very, very powerful. So even though some good can come from that, it's really not the answer. It's the change in the medical system that we have now that we get totally dependent on the government. Now, in my proposal for these significant cuts, it doesn't deal with, you know, I have priorities that I try to protect, because we have become so dependent on some of these, whether it's Social Security or medical care, and some medical research, and child health care. I'm trying to get a system where we can work things out and take care of people like that. But if we continue to do what we're doing, whether you're sick or not sick, you're not going to get anything. And Social Security, it will collapse if we collapse our currency. So whether it's Alzheimer's or cancer or whatever, the most efficient way to solve those problems is not through dependency on government, because all those funds are allotted for political reasons, and they're not necessarily the most efficient. To assume if the government doesn't do it, it won't happen, is a false assumption, because if the government's out of our way and we became prosperous again instead of a shrinking middle class, there will be more funds. Even in spite of all this, there are some very wealthy people in this country who do put a lot of money into research. There'd be hundreds, if not thousands, of more people who would have these funds available. If we would have stuck with this, you know, hospitals that were run by churches and others, we wouldn't be facing this crisis. Even in the midst of all these problems that we have, even today, in Galveston, Texas, we have a hospital that takes care of burn patients, and children, and they're not charged. So the confidence has to be placed, can these problems, if they're difficult problems, be solved only by government? Or would it be much better if you had a free and prosperous economy and worked many of these problems out as we did before 1965?
Nice to meet you, Congressman. Our question is, with abolishing five departments, how would you replace them, especially the Department of Education?
How? Okay. Oh, okay. She talked about the five departments. I want to get rid of. What would we do to replace those responsibilities that these five departments have? Well, for the most part, I wouldn't want to replace them, because I don't think we need a Department of Education. What I want to do is go back to the assumption it's not the federal government's proper authority or ability to tell your parents how to educate you. That should be the parents' responsibility. And this would mean, this would mean that if people become unsatisfied with the educational system, what we have to do is protect your right to be homeschooled, or schooled in private school, or whatever. But once again, when the government gets involved, and they pump money into any area, whether it's medicine, or education, or housing, it doesn't increase equality. What it does increase is the price. The prices go up, but the equality and the extent of those services don't go up. So getting rid of those departments doesn't mean that we want to give up on them, but we want them to be delivered in a different fashion. We aren't convinced that the government is very good at delivering these goods and services. So this would mean that you don't, if you cut, if people get worried and say, "Oh, a lot of federal officials are going to be laid off from work." Eventually, under my plan, that would happen, but they don't get laid off immediately. We want assimilation and gradually reduce the workforce in the federal government. But they're not doing productive work. We want people to work in the free-market economy and do productive work. So it's a matter of how you deliver goods and services. There's no evidence whatsoever that government is very good at doing that job.
There's been much talk about lowering the corporate tax, and yet, we have a company like General Electric that presently has 60% of their products made overseas. And my question is, how is lowering the corporate tax, given the fact that they don't even pay a corporate tax under current structure, due to loopholes, that it'll pay anything? So how does lowering the corporate tax bring jobs back to America?
Well, the one thing is, is if you are a corporation, you're international, and you make money, and they have that money overseas, they probably pay taxes overseas at a lesser rate, and that's why they're overseas. But we penalize them. If we want them to come here and build a plant at home, they will have an additional tax, so they'll be taxed twice. And we're one of, I think, two countries that actually does that, and, you know, taxes the return of capital. You have to have capital to start businesses. Capital can't come out of a printing press. And Keynesian liberals believe that you can get capital, which should come from savings, out of the Federal Reserve printing money, and it doesn't work. So you want low taxes, but you want low taxes for everybody. I mean, if the people had low taxes, if we didn't have an income tax, that means everybody would have more money to spend. So, but we, in many ways, chase businesses overseas. We do it, the currency manipulation and the fact that we have this reserve currency is a detriment to us, even though in the short run, it looks like a good deal, because we export money and get goods. So you can't do it with the monetary system. You can't do it with this excessive regulatory system. And the tax code and the tax system chases companies away. Businesses can be started in China and other countries within three weeks of trying to start a business. Here, it'll take three years to get a business started. That is not a healthy climate, and they will go overseas. Now, as far as some of the rich who don't pay taxes and they have benefits, I distinguish them, and I put them into two categories. Some are very rich, and they have a lot of money, and they manipulate the system, the inflationary system, the contract system. They make money off you by getting contracts from the government. They're in the military-industrial complex, and they're very much involved. That, to me, is not legitimate profit. If a company is paid because it delivers a profit at a good price, and you and I, you know, reward them by buying their product, and they get rich, we don't want to punish them, because that's earned capital. We should encourage them to stay, so we don't want to overtax them. But take these companies that made a lot of money in the derivatives market, all the speculations, then they went bankrupt, and then they went to the government, and they got... got bailed out and most of the salaries were protected and they're still back making money. That's the kind of rich people we should deal with, the ones who are ripping us off, but not people who provide good services for us.
Congressman?
Where?
Here.
Here we go. Back here.
You mentioned unemployment rate being 8.5, 15, 20. There are many of us believe that it's short by about 468. That's 435 members of the House of Representatives and it's 33 senators. If we were to hand you a clean slate, if we were to hand the next president a clean slate with a brand-new Congress with 435 new faces and 33 new senators, what could you do with it to put America back to work again?
That means I have all the votes and we're ready to go.
Fifty-fifty.
Pardon me?
Fifty-fifty Democrat, Republican, and the other one goes to independents.
Now, what you can do is, a president has the most responsibility in foreign policy. You can change the attitude of the world by being commander in chief and saying, we're done with the wasteful, unwinnable, undeclared wars and start bringing the troops home and have them spend their money here at home. You have to have a revision of the monetary system. To do it completely, you would have to have the cooperation of the Congress. Even that takes a little bit of time, but the immediate thing we should do is to find out what's going on. That means a thorough, complete audit of the Federal Reserve and who they've been taking care of for all these decades. Then, then in order to get that transition started, you have to legalize competition with, with the Federal Reserve. Today, it's a monopoly. You go to jail for using gold coins and silver coins. So you want competition with the Federal Reserve. So if you get nervous about the paper money losing value, you can deal in gold and silver and that would require some legislation that I've introduced for years, we would be able to get, get that passed. But you have to cut the spending and that is the most important thing. Cutting the spending and stop the bailouts, let the bad debt be liquidated. Don't let the American people get stuck with buying up this bad debt. When that message is sent, sent, that we will have a different tax code, reduce taxation, respect for contract rights and a sound money and a change foreign policy, I think psychologically, things would change immediately because it's confidence with the direction we're going. The people won't go back to, businessmen won't be, you know, investing until they get their confidence back. And as long as you just, every time we have a problem, they go to Washington, pass another program and put another layer of regulations on. And of course, it's Dodd-Frank, that's hanging out there, as well as Obamacare. That's just a burden, it's a weight and you've got to get that off and I believe we could do that.
How you doing? Thank you, Dr. Paul. I have two jobs. My first job is that I teach American and constitutional history at a community college. So I want to say thank you for talking so much about the Constitution. It's very much appreciated by myself and I'm sure everybody else in the room. My second job is I work for the New York City Police Department. I was a first responder along with thousands of other colleagues on September 11th into the city. I think that, I think that a lot of people that like what you say about the Constitution and about domestic policy are a little bit on the fence in terms of what you're saying about foreign policy and especially September 11th. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more to maybe reassure people that are on the fence.
Well, I think, you know, nine eleven will be remembered by every one of us. The one, the significant event of nine eleven, it brought American people together. We weren't Republicans or Democrats. It was a devastating day and it should have been a time when we reassessed all our values, our foreign policy and everything else. But instead of the result being that we put the burden on the American people and pass a Patriot Act and undermine the privacies of all the people, isn't the proper answer for nine eleven. But it was shortly thereafter that we had a vote, you know, to give the president the authority to go after those individuals responsible for it. And that, of course, I strongly support it. But I did not, I did not believe for a minute that authority should have been used the way it was used because it went, that authority was used to go to war against Iraq. You know, oh yeah, the Iraqis were involved and al Qaeda was there, and that wasn't true. So it was used to do things. The Patriot Act had been floating around, it was an excuse to pass the Patriot Act. It was used as an excuse to go to war against Iraq. So we have to sort that out. We can't just, you know, fly off and do things that are more harmful. But we have to do the things to defend this country. But, you know, if you get involved in more than 130 countries and 900 bases, we're not doing ourselves much of a favor because we don't have any money. But I think it's very important that we understand it. The one thing that was important about the evaluation of nine eleven was that, one thing, Paul Wolfowitz, who was the, you know, the big orchestrator for the war going into Iraq, as soon as, as soon as that happened, within days, he said, you know what? He says, this will give us a chance to get our troops out of Saudi Arabia because bin Laden was using that as a recruiting tool. So you have to give that some thought. Our troops in Saudi Arabia was seen to be on holy land, was used as a recruiting tool by bin Laden to do us harm. So they took the troops out of Saudi Arabia. But what they don't understand is troops in Muslim countries around the world and in the Middle East in particular, is still inciting people. And when we go into Pakistan with no authority whatsoever, lob these bombs after one or two or three people that are some of the bad people and then have innocent people killed, the best way to look at that is, how would we react if somebody did that to us? So I'm, the challenge I get is that I don't want to be engaged around the world. Matter of fact, I want to be very much engaged, but in a different manner. I don't want to be engaged by acting like a bully and if they do what we say, we bribe them and give them more money. If they don't, we start a war with them and we occupy their country. I'm sick and tired of that. What we need to do is influence the world with our goodness. Our goodness will be spread if we do a good job, if we have freedom and prosperity and civil rights here in this country and we mind our own business and we don't go around bullying people. Maybe people would want to see us as an example and maybe they would want to emulate us. This is so much different than what we're, what we're doing today and that's how my approach, that's how my approach is.
Until two weeks ago, I was an undecided Republican voter. I'm no longer undecided.
Only undecided question.
Okay. At the, at the prompting of my 16-year-old son, I took a good look at the Ron Paul campaign and I'm liking what I'm seeing. My question is, what advice would you give to a young man exploring a possible career in public service? Thank you.
Very important question because, you know, we have a large family, a lot of grandchildren and great-grandchildren and we talk about those kind of things. But you have to define public service. You know, if, if you want to become a bureaucrat someplace, engage in a department that isn't authorized by the Constitution, I probably wouldn't be all that encouraging. But, you know, I still take my responsibility very seriously as a congressman about appointing people who are very serious about studying and training in our military academies. And I think that's very important. And, and we always need that. But also, we need an education. Now, Jim talked a little bit about that and he also described his education after he was sent over and found out what he was actually doing in the military and it was different. So, no, you have to be careful about it. Just to say, anything in government is public service and therefore is okay. I think of public service as maybe being a local policeman, you know, dealing with and providing safety and security for us here at home, rather than accepting any rule in the federal government. All you have to do is look at the Constitution. If it's not in Article 1, Section 8, you better question whether we should be doing it.
What will be your policy on the state of Israel?
What would the policy be with the state of Israel? I would want to maintain very close relations with Israel. I want to be a good friend of Israel. And I also want to respect them in many ways that I do not think the United States should undermine their sovereignty in any way. The establishment of Israel came about with a movement called Zionism. And Zionism had two basic principles. One was independence and self-reliance. And I agree with those two basic, fundamental premises of Zionism. But I also don't think we should tell them what to do. If they want to have a peace treaty with some neighbor and think they can work it out, they shouldn't have to ask us for permission. They shouldn't have to ask us permission to defend their borders. That should be their business. But also, I do not believe that I should take money from anybody here and send money Now, some people would say, oh, that means you're anti-Israel. But I'm pro-American. But, but no, actually, this is a benefit to Israel. First, when you give money, that implies we own you. And second is if you cut out all foreign aid, Israel comes out ahead because their neighbors get about five times as much assistance, you know, than Israel gets. So I don't think, I don't think it's much of a problem, but we should be friends, we should trade with them. I would encourage them to become the Hong Kong of the Middle East or something like that. You know, have a really affluent society. But we have, we have every reason to want to get along and, and we can. But to control them and regulate and hold them back, I think that is not necessary. Matter of fact, Netanyahu was before the Congress, you know, this year, and he was explicit, you can go and look at his speech. He says, we do not need American troops to defend our country. He says, we don't, we don't need American troops. He said, Israel can take care of itself. And I think we should respect that.
Oh, I thought I got to hold it. Dr. Paul, a question might, my daughter has been ill for many years and now she's on our insurance, but she'll graduate from college. Does she have to stand in line at a, at a charity hospital to get help under your administration?
Well, you'll probably be standing in line under Obamacare, let me tell you. At the rate we're going, it's going to be, be difficult. It's been messed up and that's why I have reserved the final decision on the reform of the medical care for elderly and the children and also social security. Because it's messed up. Because it's messed up, you can't say those of us who want to reform it and get it back to sound footing is at fault because, you know, the money has been spent, the money isn't there for social security, Medicaid and Medicare has really no money in the bank. So I want to preserve at least what people have become dependent on. But the, the whole thing is, is the insurance business and the way, the way we have given benefits, tax benefits to insurance over the years has encouraged problems with transferring a policy. But to, under a good insurance system, a free market system, if a child or an 18-year-old or whatever buys an insurance policy and pays for it and it doesn't go with the job, you don't have to transfer it. The contract should be there. They should never be able to cancel you. But then we got into this mess where it goes with the company but not with the individual. If you have individual insurance, you go and get the deduction. If you work for a big company, you do, you transfer your job, then you have to have a new insurance company. That's all artificial. The market has been messed up that way. So because that is more complex, I'd want to work to that system. But in the meantime, the only way we can save the medical care system from total bankruptcy and really ruining the care completely is by cutting spending elsewhere. That's why I think we should all come together with looking at this overseas spending that has nothing to do with our national defense.
All right. We have time for one more question.
Dr. Paul, I'm over here. I'm an independent voter and cherish that. And I'm feeling very hopeless about any president succeeding right now because of the way Congress doesn't work together because essentially, it's a two-party system and they're fighting. So someone asked you earlier, what would you do if you could start fresh? The reality is, you can't, right?
Can't what?
You can't start fresh with Congress and--
Okay, well, maybe, maybe I can give you a better answer if I didn't understand the other one. But go ahead, finish up.
So with the Congress that you have and will have, depending on what people vote, how are you going, how would you handle the competition between, and the fighting between the two sides?
With difficulty. But with a new approach, completely new. Everybody knows what I'm talking about, it's different. Because I have such a strange new idea, it's obeying the Constitution. But I know exactly what you're talking about and I appeal to that group, independent people who are sick and tired of the two-party system. The people who are going out on Occupy Wall Street, they're sick and tired of it. Tea Party people are sick and tired of it because it's, it's not working because they have accepted failed economic policy. So you can't change it without changing policy. You have to, you can't tinker on the edges about foreign policy and say, well, we're going to cut this and here, we'll only go into two countries instead of three. You have to decide whether we're the policemen of the world. And that's what has to be decided. Now, our fallacy over these many decades, when it was endless spending and we didn't have to be responsible, we kept re-electing the members of Congress so the people have some responsibility too. They kept spending the money and they kept bringing the goods back to their districts and saying, look what I did, look what I did. But how did they do it? They had, they had too much compromise. There were conservatives who spent money endlessly for their project, liberals spent it for the other. There was no money, so they agreed to raise the national debt. So that was the wrong kind of compromise. I don't look at, what we need is more compromise. What we need is more coalition building. And this is why I think freedom works and the Constitution works because it brings people together for different reasons. People who understand freedom want to use their freedom the way they want in their personal lives and other people want to use their freedom in their economic lives and spend their money as they see fit. So this would bring people together if they understand this. But the coalition's about spending overseas. I work with a lot of independent-type, moderate liberal Democrats who see this more likely than some conservative Republican. So I think you have to work with those people, protecting civil liberties, you know, cutting some of this overseas spending. At the same time, you have to work with people who, you know, have, have some better sense on too much, too much spending here at home. But if, if we continue to depend on deficit spending, there is, there is no solution. The big difference will be, with the victory in this race for our campaign sends a very powerful message. It's also the reason they are very, very scared because they, the term that they use, that I always give a chuckle about, is they say, we have to stop Ron Paul. He's dangerous. That means if you're supporting me, you're a very dangerous person because you want balanced budget, living within our means, sound money, follow the Constitution, defending But I believe, I really believe sincerely, we can bring the people together, not necessarily with the crowd up there right now, but if a new president has those views, a lot of new people will be swept in. But there's one other secret weapon we have that can help change things. I let you in on a secret. The people in Washington aren't all that principled. Did you know that? So you have to use that to our advantage because that doesn't mean you have to get rid of everybody. All you have to do is let your voice be heard and say, you help out, you go the certain way, vote against Obamacare or whatever it is, or we're going to send you home. So you can pressure them to come along with the programs I'm suggesting. Thank you very much. That was it?
Thank you, Dr. Paul.
Thank you, Dr. Paul.
Thanks for that, Paul.
There you go. Okay, good. Glad you're here.
I'm a guy from New York, who thinks that Christianity is a new Judaism, a religion, and it should never be transformed into a nationalism.
Good advice. Good advice.
Okay, that's for me?
Yes. All right, very good. My wife will make sure I get that to my house.
All right, Dr. Paul, good to see you.
Hey, how are you?
All right. You first.
My daughter.
Wonderful.
I have a question for you. Who is John Boe?
I think I remember that story.
That's what I'm interested in, in Indian first.
Is that?
Yeah.
Have you distinguished the difference between apartheidism and libertarianism? Okay, that's important.
I assume that's why I'm not a libertarian.
Pardon me?
I assume that's why I'm not a libertarian.
Well, I don't sign away from that.
My grandfather, grandmother actually went to high school.
Oh, is that right?
And my mom grew up.
Baby, she probably knew Murray Rothbard then.
My mom grew up with objectiveism, and I grew up with it. And my house has six coffees, so that is.
You have one of the first coffees? I have the first 50 cent, first amount.
I don't, but I have a lot of them.
Okay, good.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Paul, so you're not a libertarian?
No.
You're not?
No.
Thank you. Jared, Jared Pitt. Okay, I don't know.
Well, thanks for serving, and I'm glad about being dressed, so was I.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
Back in the 60s?
Yeah, Vietnam, yeah.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. Well, I didn't have any wife, I was single.
But you know what? I think we could get out easier if we had kids, but a doctor, they need to give us something. They were tougher on us.
I got wounded though, glad I was doctors around.
I'm a psychiatrist.
Oh, wow.
Can I get a photo with you?
How can anybody do anything?
Thank you so much.
All right. Good job, we're right here. Okay, I guess it's done.
Turned off, turned off.
Real quick, real quick, real quick.
Okay, good to see you. Oh, no.